I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our presentation of colors is by Erwin High School. And it, um, the instructor is Sergeant Major Carland. We welcome Erwin High School, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors.
I'd ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and note that on the consent agenda that we're pulling the item concerning the Erwin High School request for a vendor substitution to next month. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to announce that Ms. Buchanan is joining us tonight, can't you see her, right here? Via telephone, and they are managing that in this wonderful technology place, right back here in the back. And we appreciate them doing that as well. It's now time for the superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone, everyone, and especially Ms. Buchanan. We've had a very positive start to this school year, and I want to see a number of our administrators in the stands, and they have smiles on their faces, so that just echoes-
That's just because tomorrow's Friday.
I want to begin tonight by thanking our county commissioners for transferring the remaining appropriation of operating funds to our budget. The 1.56 million dollars represented a significant majority of salary and benefits for all of our locally paid staff throughout the school district. And this transfer is also significant to allow Mrs. Frisbee, who has the biggest smile on her face after that decision or vote, to present a balanced annual budget to you, the board, as we typically do at our October board meeting. Likewise, I want to extend our appreciation to the commissioners for supporting the expansion of school resource officers into the elementary and intermediate schools. While school resource officers are assigned at each middle and high school here in Buncombe County, the additional six officers will increase the coverage of our elementary and intermediate schools to two officers for each of the six districts. So we're very excited about that. And we continue to designate school safety to receive the highest of our priorities. That's nothing that is unusual across this entire nation, as all systems begin a new school year. And in fact, our October 16th district advisory, district-wide advisory meeting, we will be focusing on school safety in that presentation. And I should also note that this month has been declared across North Carolina Safe Schools Month by our Department of Public Instruction and State Superintendent Mark Johnson. Our state legislature provided their emphasis on safety by granting $35 million in grant funding for various school safety-related programs, and of which $22 million has already been awarded. And I'm very pleased to say that we in Buncombe County have, are in the category of those awardees. We received $333,000 for our SROs, and in addition to $230,000 for behavioral health specialists and training that will go along with that, that is very much needed in our school system. And we have applied for and are currently awaiting news on a $120,000 request for school safety equipment that will include door entry control systems. And I do want to thank Mr. Huff, David Thompson, I see Mr. Barry Pace up there, they have been busy writing those grants, and we're two-for-three, and Mr. Pace, the pressure is on you that we were batting a thousand, so. But again, we appreciate the funding from the state. I'm going to shift gears, and I want to talk about our recently released accountability results that came from the 2017-18 school year. And I want to preface by saying we will always hold ourselves to the highest of standards, and anytime we announce accolades, we recognize that there is always room for improvement. But that said, I'm extremely proud of our results and the dedicated efforts of our administrators, our teachers, and our students, as we emphasized a back-to-basics approach in the classrooms. And I see some smiles up there, because back-to-basics was certainly our theme last year. Overall, across the district, 36 of our 42 schools either met or exceeded their growth targets, and having spent some time looking across the state at other school systems, this is an outstanding achievement, people. We should be very proud of what took place regarding the growth. That equates to 86% of the schools in Buncombe County. And again, that is just outstanding when you compare that across systems in the state. Also want to note, we have several middle school principals here, that all of our middle schools either met or exceeded growth. And once again, I'm proud to recognize Valley Springs Middle School for their sixth consecutive year of exceeding their growth targets. And Emma Elementary, we're not going to forget them, because this is the fifth year in a row that they exceeded growth expectations. And I can tell the public that in this business, that's incredible, especially at both of those, both of those schools, for different reasons. While I continue to advocate for a change in the 80/20 percentage, that's academic performance to growth formula, 23 of our schools earned an A or B grade. And similar to the majority of A-grade schools across North Carolina, our three, Early College, Middle College, and Nesbit Discovery, represented cooperative innovative school model. So this, this was a pattern that held very true across the state. Two of our schools remained on low-performing status with D grades, although both did meet their growth targets. Across the state, and I did find this statistic, and again, in defense of, it's time we changed that formula. Across the state, 69% of schools with 81% or more free or reduced lunch enrollment, and 45% of the schools with student populations of 69 to 80%, free or reduced categories received Ds or Fs. That's just staggering. And again, I think that's clear proof that it's time we look at this 80/20 formula. And especially for schools with those type of challenges, which includes a number of schools in the Buncombe County school system, it is a difficult formula to achieve success under. For such schools, again, achieving academic growth in their students' learning should certainly represent a much greater factor than in the current grading formula. So with that, great start, Madam Chair, and I'm turning it back over to you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate all the work that our teachers and staff have put into this, and also our students. You know, we can't succeed without their work and their dedication to completing those marks, those tests. It's now time for good news.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have a full agenda of good news this evening. If David Ball could come on down, he's our BCS District Athletic Specialist. He's here to help us recognize just some of the folks that work with our student athletes during games and during practices to keep them safe.
Okay, we may have a picture come up on the screen here in a minute, we may not. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, distinguished guests, good evening. It's my honor this evening to recognize Pardee Sports Medicine and Southeastern Sports Medicine and Orthopedics for their outstanding service in providing sports medicine services to Buncombe County schools. These two groups, working in partnership together, provide athletic trainers, team physicians, and sports medicine services to Inca, Owen, and Reynolds High Schools, Kane Creek, Inca, Owen, and Reynolds Middle Schools. They currently serve seven of our 13 schools that have interscholastic athletic programs. I would like to briefly describe the scope of sports medicine services that they provide to our schools. The services provided includes a minimum of two certified licensed athletic trainers to serve each high school and its feeder middle school. They must provide a team physician for each school district. They must provide a clinical team to include a board-certified sports medicine physician, an orthopedic surgeon, a primary care physician, and access to a network of specialists engaged with each of our schools to maximize athletic performance, prevent injury, and provide treatment and rehabilitation when injuries occur. Also provided will be annual physical exams for our student athletes, baseline and post-concussion testing of our student athletes, required annual concussion training updates for the coaching staffs of our schools, annual AED CPR training for our coaching staffs, the management of a student athlete athletic training program in our schools, and the priority that our athletes will receive easy access to their injury clinics and facilities of our sports medicine providers. Madam Chair, I believe today that athletes and coaches in Buncombe County schools are receiving the best sports medicine care, support, and services of any time in the history of our school system. It says I'm old, too, I know the whole history.
You're younger than I am.
We are very fortunate to have such outstanding sports medicine groups working with our schools. In recognition of this, we would like to express our appreciation and recognize Pardee Sports Medicine and Southeastern Sports Medicine and Orthopedics. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Greg Motley, representing Pardee Sports Medicine and Southeastern Sports Medicine Orthopedics, to come forward. And I would also like to say to show my confidence in Greg and his group, my immediate family's had five surgeries from him, so we had a lot of, a lot of confidence in him. I would like to ask Mr. Queen, Ms. McMahon, and Dr. Baldwin to come forward as well as we do the presentation of plaques.
Did you expect he'd give you some kind of cut on the fee when you announced that, David?
Absolutely.
That's okay. We'll let Cindy and Max take this one.
Small rural town in Glasgow, Kentucky. This town, and what you do as teachers, administrators, allowed me to do, to come in town. Wasn't very a smart move to take away all the physicals from all the family physicians and internal medicine, and I didn't realize that would make everyone mad when we started doing the physicals. And then one of the coaches, one time at Inca, after we did about 400 physicals, he came up and said, "Dr. Motley, look at this wad of money." And I said, "What did you do?" He said, "I collected $10 per physical." I was like, "What are we going to do with that?" So anyway, what we did was started donating it back to the school. And it's an honor and a privilege to be in, on a field, in a locker room, but especially having had two daughters that attended here at Buncombe County School under a very good principal and administrator. My daughters have done exceedingly exceptional under this school system. It's just an honor and privilege to take care of the athletes. It's sad when they get hurt, but we take pride in getting them back. And having been on the other side of the scalpel, it is something that's not fun when you do have an athlete that gets hurt. But because of the great teachers and administration and support, getting athletes back in the classroom, getting them over that hump, getting them back successful in the classroom, that's what you all do great. And we thank you for working with us and getting them back academically, and we get them back on the field. It's a joy for us to work with you guys and be available for you at any time. Thank you for these awards.
It's also comforting as a board member to sit in those ballgames and watch those people that you know are going to take care of our students that are there. And believe you me, this board member and I'm sure all seven of us sit there and look to see how quickly your people get to our injuries.
Not as fast as I used to be.
Thank you.
Next up for our recognition, we'd like to recognize our Finance Department for a couple of different awards. So first up, could Ms. Frisbee and everyone in Finance who's here today come on forward to the middle? It's your time to shine.
Group shot. So the first recognition is, the Finance Department has earned the, and I practiced this all afternoon, so everyone hold on, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And they've also received the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that's for their comprehensive annual financial report. So, hope I did a good job, applause for me.
So, we're very grateful and appreciative for this recognition. This is what we do, we're being due diligent and promoting transparency by submitting this, this report to GFOA and ASBO. But it would not happen without this, this team here, I have a few of my Finance Team here, but without their input and support, and it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. So we're, I am grateful for them and for what they do, and we're grateful for this recognition. So, thank you.
I don't speak their language, you know, it's a different language than the rest of us talk, when they talk about money.
This is how you talk about money.
All right, everyone, I want you to introduce yourselves. I'm going to pass the mic down, speak like this.
Denise McLemore, I am the accounting, reporting-
Accounting reporting manager.
Pam Rowe, I'm the internal auditor.
I'm Jason Monstrel, I'm, I assist payroll and accounts payroll with printing of checks, and I also am the tech for the building, so.
I'm Carol Edge, I'm in the Budget Office.
Tiffany McCants, Purchasing and Risk Control Manager.
I also found out that Jason's part-time job is leading people to the minitorium when they get lost, so that's what we call added benefit. All right, so, while Ms. Frisbee gathers her paperwork and her notes, the next item that we want to recognize are our employees who've graduated from the NC ASBO Treasury
So, Madam Chair, Superintendent Baldwin, members of the board, I am just humbled and honored to be here to recognize this stellar group of young ladies who went through the NC ASBO Treasure Academy and graduated back in the spring. And we had 12 members, 12 school bookkeepers that participated in this, this academy. And I want to give you a little bit of background about it. So, the NC ASBO School Treasure Academy was developed as an expansion of the NC ASBO School Business Management Academy, which is what I went through. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. The course consists of 12 classes ranging from general accounting, school finance law, human resources, and effective communications. These classes help the school treasurer with their responsibility in providing accurate financial information and useful data for the administration of special funds for individual schools. Upon completion of the course, the school treasurer receives a certificate from the NC ASBO School Treasure Academy indicating their successful participation in the classes offered. So this academy consisted of 42 hours, it was, each class was three and a half hours, and it totally focused on school finance. And you all know school finance is a beast of its own, so it was honed in for, for school, individual school accounting. So, to me, the reason I'm just honored that these, these ladies participate in this, because it shows their commitment to what they do. And, you know, they're, they're, they're just great, what they contribute to Buncombe County Schools is just invaluable. So, I also want to thank the principals for allowing them the opportunity to be away from their school to take these courses, because that's time away from their school. And we hosted the academy here, and several other districts participated, so, but I just want to say that it's my honor and privilege to award the following people a certificate of completion for the Treasure Academy. So when I call your name, if you'll come on down. Sharon Briggs, who's with the Nesbit Discovery Academy. Cindy Jones with North Wendy Ridge. Donna Palmer from Inca High School. And I told Ms. Val, I was just going to call her Ms. Val, because I will butcher her last name, so Ms. Val from CT Kuntzen immediately. From Kane Creek Middle School. And Pam Rowe from the School Finance Department. And I have to have a special shout-out to Pam. Pam helped organize this. So every time we had a meeting, she would send out the emails, and when we had a class, so she was instrumental in organizing this, so each, each graduate could attend the classes. Now, we had, we had five people that could not attend. Tracy Merrill, who is now in the Student Services Department, she was unable to attend. Serena Moss from North Buncombe High School, Ramona Shuford from Emma, Fran Warren from Glen Arden, and Jessica Smith, and her school escapes me, but they were unable to attend. But they are also graduates at this academy, so let's give them a big round of applause. And could the Finance Team come back down for one last group shot? Because it's my first night doing a board meeting, apparently. I forgot your plaque. So come on down for one more group shot, Ms. Frisbee?
Yeah, I just want to say one other thing about this NC ASBO Treasure Academy. We just started our second cohort, and we've got 12 more bookkeepers in it, so, yay. So, let me put this somewhere.
Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, can you guys hop up again?
Sure.
Thank you. Take two.
We do.
Take two. Pretend like you guys didn't just do this a few minutes ago, just keep on smiling. Thank you, guys. Our final piece of good news this evening, Ms. Debbie Bryant is going to come on down. She is our Healthful Living Coordinator for the district, she's going to talk about our partnership with Jump Rope for Heart.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Baldwin, and board members, it's my pleasure to be here tonight with you. Someone very wise once said that it's important for one to know the purpose, the reason that you do something, it's your why. And so tonight, you're going to meet one of our whys. For the past 25-plus years, our schools have participated in our activities that promote the American Heart Association, whether it be through Jump Rope for Heart, or Hoops for Heart, many different areas. So tonight, we have with us the Youth Market Director for our area in western North Carolina. Her name is Erin DeRosa, and you'll meet some other folks as well as she introduces them.
Thank you, Debbie. So, like Debbie said, my name is Erin DeRosa, and I'm with the American Heart Association and Kids' Heart Challenge, which some of you might remember as Jump Rope for Heart or Hoops for Heart. Our program really focuses on heart education within the schools, with elementary school, middle school, and high school, where we're engaging the students through jump rope activities, basketball activities, and anything that gets them moving. Now, one of the things that we ask the students to think about every single year is, why are they doing Jump Rope for, or why are they doing Kids' Heart Challenge? Do they have a personal connection? Do they have someone in their family who's had a heart attack, who's had a stroke? And we also like to bring in our heart heroes, that we like to call them, and some of these heart heroes end up inspiring our students. So last year, a now-fifth grader inspired thousands of children across western North Carolina, and she continues to do so. And so I would like to share her story with you tonight.
Hey, I'm Anne Louise, and I am a heart hero, and I am nine years old, and I go to Hominy Valley Elementary, and I am in fourth grade.
We found out at 22 weeks in utero that Anne Louise had critical aortic stenosis developing into hypoplastic left heart syndrome, hypoplastic left heart syndrome. And there weren't many options that were given. Anne Louise, with hypoplastic left heart, she would have been born with half a heart. So, we started doing research, because we didn't like the options that were given to us. And we found-
The cardiac intervention program at Boston Children's.
Yes.
And we spoke to them a few days before Thanksgiving, and made the decision in 2007, before Anne Louise was born, to travel to Boston- before Anne Louise was born, to travel to Boston Children's the Monday after Thanksgiving. And they did testing on Anne Louise while in utero and came back and talked to Mary Beth and I about what possibilities and options we had.
Anne Louise has had a series of three open-heart surgeries. So they replaced her aortic valve with her pulmonary valve because her pulmonary valve was in good shape. And then she had a Ross-Kono procedure. She's also had where they have taken, she's done mitral valve repair, but her mitral valve, they weren't able to save it. And so they replaced her mitral valve with a mechanical valve. So she has a mechanical mitral valve. So she's pretty special. You can hear her valves sometimes clicking. If you're real quiet, then that's her mechanical valve. And she will need surgeries throughout her life as she grows and as she outgrows her valves. But that's okay. We'll take it. We have a wonderful staff at Hominy Valley Elementary School here in Dale in Buncombe County. We coordinate with Coach Andrews, with her teachers, with Nurse Leslie, she's the school nurse, with Ms. Walker, who's the principal. And if Anne Louise's INR is too high, which means she has a potential for bleeding, we will notify Coach Andrews so she stays out of gym or has modified activity. And then if it's too low, again, you risk a blood clot. So we just watch her, and her teachers watch her, you know, with playgrounds, you know, because it's not just in gym class, but we want her to be able to run with her peers and have fun with her peers and participate. I don't think we would be able to do it, though, without the help, you know. People say it takes a village. And so we have a great team that has been, you know, established at Hominy Valley to help. And without support from Jump Rope for Heart, the American Heart Association, programs that fund research and experimental surgeries, we wouldn't have Anne Louise. She would not be here had she been born just a couple of years before because of all the advances in medical technology and science. And so thank you so much for your support.
The American Heart Association and the research provided by the American Heart Association is really important to all the kids that are like Anne Louise. Like Mary Beth said, absolutely, if the research advancement is not happening in the heart world as fast as it is, then we wouldn't, Anne Louise certainly wouldn't be as healthy as she is now. So we're extremely grateful for those that are supporting the American Heart Association and Jump Rope for Heart.
Thank you for participating in Jump Rope for Heart.
Does anyone need a tissue? Because I think I do every time after I see that. So Anne Louise is one of the kindest people that I have ever met. She has more grit than I think most of us in this room do. And it's my pleasure and my honor to have her and her family here with us this evening. She has inspired many students across western North Carolina, many of whom have written letters, drawn pictures, where they've dedicated their Jump Rope for Heart or Hoops for Heart event in her honor last year. Anne Louise, Mary Beth, Andrew, Graham, and the rest of your family, thank you for all that you have done this past year and in years before that. We are all fighting beside you. Please join me in recognizing one of the many heart heroes in our community, Anne Louise Atherton. So at this time, I would like to quickly run through the schools that have participated in the 2017, 2018 Jump Rope for Heart and Hoops for Heart or Kids' Heart Challenge. So if you have a representative from your school, please come on down. You will grab a certificate from Debbie, and Anne Louise will be here to present it to you as well. So we have Barnardsville Elementary School, Bell Elementary School, Black Mountain Elementary School, Black Mountain Primary School, Candler Elementary School, Emma Elementary School, Irwin Middle School, Fairview Elementary School, Glen Arden Elementary School, Hominy Valley Elementary School, Johnston Elementary School, Lester Elementary School, North Buncombe Elementary School, Oakley Elementary, Pisgah Elementary School, WD Williams Elementary School, Weaverville Primary School, Estes Elementary School, and Woodfin Elementary School. So thank you so much for all of your participation last year.
Jenny, come back. Come on down for a group shot altogether now. And you as well. And Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair. All right, everyone look at that. It's good news for the evening.
What a way to end. At this time, we have a curriculum feature.
Chair, Dr. Baldwin, Board members, good evening. And I think I need Anna Louise to teach me how to do a hula hoop. She could teach many of us how to do that and be ready for Jump Rope for Heart. So thank you for being here this evening with us. Tonight, we're going to change gears and talk a little bit about the Guiding Principle: Safety and Support Systems from the Strategic Plan. Section 2, letter I, talks about school nutrition. So we want to give you updates on many of our programs and the cafeterias that you may see and hear about, talk a little bit about summer meals and how that went, and then some ABCs about meals and more. So I'm going to introduce our director, Lisa Payne, and she will introduce staff and share a little bit with you this evening.
Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the Board, that's a hard act to follow. That is a hard act to follow. So what was beautiful about Anna Louise is that in school nutrition, we strive to serve children healthy and delicious meals to prevent and help with chronic illnesses. So I wish she was here to hear how much we love her and every other child in Buncombe County. My staff, my leadership team, Cheryl Harris, Assistant Director, Debbie Thompson, superintendent, I'm sorry, Dr. Baldwin, be careful, she's after. Supervisor, Taylor Nobles, CN Specialist Registered Dietitian, and Tammy Robinson, Interim Supervisor and Field Manager. We're excited to be here. We're going to show what we're doing, a little bit of highlights from 2017, 18, a little bit going forward into 18 and 19. And what we have in front of us right now is a Wordle, a word cloud that I learned this week, and it has a lot of words which are ingredients that go into our total program. So we're kind of the school nutrition alphabet soup. A is for administration. Our programs are the National School Lunch Program, National Breakfast Program, Summer Food Service Program, After School Snack Program, and the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. B, B is for Buncombe County, my alphabet, B is for Buncombe County Meals and Snacks Served in 2018. On our National School Lunch Program, we served 2,451,907 meals in 180 days of service. Our National Breakfast Program, we've served 1,879,22 meals in 180 days. Our Summer Food Service Program, 86,303 meals in 44 days. Our After School Snack Program, 86,303, and those days vary depending on the schools. And our Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, 221,600 meals. So we were busy, and we have 230 employees that make that happen. And then C, out of our ABCs, C is for Celebration, Curriculum, Customers, and Cafeterias as Learning Labs. Customer participations, our menus are student-tested and student-driven. Customers, please and thank you, we say that a lot. Our Rolling to Feed Bus, you'll see a picture of it here a little bit more soon. Our Produce Fairs, where our Registered Dietitian goes out into the schools, eight elementary schools per year, and teaches our students about local foods, fruits and vegetables, and exotic fruits and vegetables. Our School Health Advisory Council, Pat Bryant is our liaison, thank you. Debbie Bryant serves that with me as well. And we've also won the Turn Up the Beat Award again this year. So we're turning up the beat as we go in 2018. Our Healthy U.S. School Challenge continues for 1819. We celebrate our Caliente Cowboys from Irwin High and everything they contributed in the North Carolina Regional in Greensburg, cooking up school food service. Our Farm-to-School Initiative is growing. Our wellness teams are strong. And the last one is GAP, and that's something I haven't said in front of you before, and that's Louis Foot from Community High School. And he is going through GAP, Good Agricultural Practices for Certification, so he can start bringing food from his garden to serve our students in Buncombe Community Schools. So that's really, really exciting stuff. So we've covered some ABCs. Now we're going to look at a few things. This is just a red, white, and blue, fresh blueberries, fresh raspberries, strawberries, and white cheese, because in our program, we have to buy American, and that's some local produce, and just we wanted to show how pretty that food is. And next, we're going to celebrate Rolling to Feed. And Cheryl Harris, you're going to tell us a little bit about that, right?
Hello. The Rolling to Feed Bus, the idea took place about two to three years ago, and finally this year, it came to fruition with the help of a lot of community partners. We are very thankful to have its inaugural run to de-review apartments in August of this year. Students were able to board the bus with their families and enjoy a meal. Within days, it was then rolling on to Lester Community Center as well, where they were able to also board the bus and enjoy their meals. Our future plans for the Rolling to Feed Bus include retrofitting it into a mobile cafe where we can reach more rural areas where children may not be able to get to summer feeding sites, and we also hope to implement it during the school year. There's a couple of different plans in the works at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next, we have a picture of Dr. Baldwin serving summer meals. He looks very happy, and the students that are receiving the meals look very happy. Do I need to move that over? Okay.
And then this summer, thank you to Communication Station, her team, of course, Tim and Ben, always great support. Students Ready to Learn. This is a school nutrition recipe booklet that these children have to take home so they can become future employees for our school food service organization. Got Milk, that's one of our promotions that we did last year. Debbie Thompson, you want to tell us what we're going to see this year?
Got Milk is just around the corner, September 26. We also have North Carolina Crunch this year in October, October 3, where we're supporting our local farmers with apples, and all of the kids will be crunching apples on October 3. And following that, of course, is our school lunch, National Lunch Week.
And our theme for that this year is Lots to Love.
Lots and lots to love. And you'll see lots of hearts, lots of smiles, lots of happy faces.
Lots to love. Thank you, Debbie. Well, you can stay with me, because this is a picture at lunchtime at North Buncombe Elementary, one of their favorite times of day. And we always love it when we have a parent at the cafeteria having lunch with us. Another motto we've adopted in our back-to-school training kickoff is be our guest. Debbie, you were instrumental in that.
Be our guest basically is everybody knows from Beauty and the Beast, be our guest, be welcoming, be smiling, be, come on, have a good food. We're really working on our customer service this year. We're working on our quality of our food, our presentation of our food, our thank yous, and, you know, just welcoming these students to come through. We don't know what kind of day they've had. We don't know what kind of morning they've had. And so we're there to support them and feed their tummies and get them going to learn. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's a great picture we've seen, Caliente Cowboys. We wanted to show that again from Irwin High School. And this is, we have a great contest. And Taylor, I'm going to let you share information about our contest. And everybody has to get involved with this because it ends tomorrow.
Yes, so we've created a friendly competition with the School Nutrition Association where we've invited the cafeteria managers to send bulletin boards from the beginning of the school year. And we have posted these on Facebook for the public to vote for. So the winning school will get an award from the School Nutrition Association. Voting ends tomorrow at about 12:00. So if everyone can like us on Facebook, we are Buncombe County Schools, School Nutrition. And there's just a few more.
And as you can see, they all support nutrition education. They all support Eat Smart and Move More and physical education in our schools. Johnston Elementary, I have, all my employees are my favorites. All my children are my favorites. I don't have any favorites because everybody's my favorite. All these billboards are my favorite, but I did save this one for last because it says, "Welcome back, Bears, now serving up smiles." And how perfect is that in a food service organization? And perfect in our food service organization because we're working with Buncombe County to prepare their students for their tomorrows. And our school meals improve learning environments, and we truly believe that nutritious meals help children learn. And so I'm going to be a little bit silly here, believe it or not, and I'm going to give credit to Brian Chandler for his students. At the end of the video yesterday, I know that they were celebrating his getting Principal of the Year, but it was so perfect because they looked so happy eating those school meals. And those school meals are empty, and they are clapping, and they're standing up. So we kind of took a tidbit of that for this presentation. So we have covered some ABCs, and now we want to look at our Ps and Qs and make sure that we're minding our Ps and Qs. And in doing that, we have to look at P for partnerships. Thank Buncombe County Schools Board of Education, you, of course, and all of the departments within the organization for with whom without we could not do what we do each day. Buncombe Community Schools Foundation, for Lisa Atkins' vision in helping us find the funding for our bus. Park Ridge Hospital, our biggest donation for the bus. United Way, Ms. Swanger's program with our homework diners, we love serving them. Cheetah Larton Sun, the graphics for our Rolling to Feed Bus, Care Partners. And then Appalachian Sustainable Agriculture Project, who does an amazing job supporting our local farm-to-school initiative. So P is for partnerships. P is also for professional development. And I won't read through all of that for the sake of time, but it just lets you know from my level to a part-time employee, everyone has to maintain certain certifications so that they are always abreast with current trends in school nutrition and food service. And then, of course, here's a great picture from last year of our school nutrition professionals and their support teams, their principals, and their administrators for whom, without them, they could not be successful. So our Ps, and now our Qs, and Q is for questions. And Tammy Robinson, I didn't want to leave you out. I'm sorry, I did. So we're going to back up one slide in our minds and just let Tammy give a little bit of the training stuff. I'm so sorry. And you loved it all.
I was so close to getting out of that. Amazing things that's happening in school nutrition, but we take it to a whole nother level. We are known as the lunch ladies, but we're trying to move into the new age, and with all our training, a lot, all of our managers have had over 30 hours of training before the kids even hit the doors this year. So we're trying to move to culinary professionals. And we want to leave the lunch lady behind because we're operating restaurants in these schools. So we're training up culinary professionals for the new age and not so much lunch ladies anymore.
A new attitude, I believe is how that goes, right? We have a new attitude? Well, actually, all of our folks, we only have 10 that are left, and they'll receive training on October 15. They've all gone through Chef Ambassador training. So I watch, and I've got principals in here... So I watch, and, and I've got principals in here that have grown, watched their staff grow in amazing leaps and bounds just in the past year. So the final ruling from Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act 2010 is now a final rule. We have to take it to the next level, and I'm going to use the word, I wasn't going to use it, but I'm going to do it, say quintessential. I feel like for what we do, we're the best food service operation in western North Carolina, and I'd put us against any school food service team in the state or nation. So we're proud, and we thank you for listening.
Well, you should be.
Thank you. Thank you.
I understand we don't have any public comment tonight, so we're moving on to the action agenda. And the item, the one singular item on the action agenda is the pool replacement, waterline easement, and transfer. I'm looking for a motion to authorize execution of owner's certificate of completion and closeout documents necessary to transfer the new water line at the pool at TC Robertson High School to the city of Asheville. Any board members have questions in this regard? Mr. Bryant?
I do, Mr. Fairley. Just out of curiosity, because the documents are not completed, has the water line already been done, one? And if so, what's the size of the easement? How long is it, and how wide is that water easement? Do you know?
It goes from the road to the pool.
How wide of an easement is a water easement? Do you know? Is it a 10-foot?
I don't think it's that wide. It's three feet on each side of, is my recollection. I may be wrong on that.
So it's three, not four, on each side of the line?
And on each side of the line, and it just allows them to get in there and do maintenance on that.
And it has, it is finished? It has been constructed, or?
It has. It hasn't been activated until this all goes through, but it's been put in place, tested, and it's ready to go contingent upon this.
And I was just, it doesn't matter about the size. I was just curious if you knew the size. I know how wide typically the utility easements are, but I don't know that we've ever had a water easement come to the board.
And I could be wrong on that. That's from memory, but it allows them to get in there and, you know, make repairs as necessary.
And I'm going down there tomorrow. I'll measure it for you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if it's in the ground and covered, you won't be, unless they've still got it marked, you won't be able to.
You can point it out to me. I'll take my tape measure.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question, possibly to the attorney. It talks about this being a permanent easement, and should at some point in the future, a need arise that a building be sited on that site, is there provisions, or how would we go about relocating that, since the easement has been granted as a permanent condition?
We would have to relocate the water line. And once we relocated the water line, we would then give the city of Asheville an easement over the current, or the new water line position, thereby obtaining permission from them to build over what is now the current one.
So long, so long we retain the right to relocate and provide a separate easement, the city of Asheville does not retain a right to refuse us the opportunity to do that?
I'm not sure of that answer. Dirt law is not my specialty.
I think it's, I don't know that would ever happen, but I would hate to be putting up corn.
I mean, I don't see why they, why they would if we were, if we were going to pay for and move the water line. Now, if it was a sewer line, it'd probably be very difficult to get it, you know, you can't build over it. But, but I don't, I don't think the city would ever stop us from doing that if we were going to move it, and moving it wouldn't harm any other utility easements or waterline easements in the, in the area.
I can add that it has been located in a kind of a peripheral location to accommodate potential future development, but that's not saying that the development could take on a character that we don't envision at this time.
Thank you.
This is another legal question, and maybe it's a stupid question, but that's okay. So the, what, so it's a waterline easement and transfer. So can you explain the difference between the easement and the transfer? Because in the initial paragraph, it says a related easement is required, and so I thought we were just granting an easement, but then in the recommendation, it says we're going to transfer the water line to them. So will they actually own the water line, or will they just have the easement?
Well, if you go to the, if you go to the actual document, it looks like we are giving them the right, therefore an easement, to construct, operate, maintain, repair the water line for public use. And then, of course, the, so basically, I mean, they are taking ownership of the water line, because they have the right to come in and do it, but then the court, they also have the easement over our land to come in and repair it as well.
Okay. So the transfer is for the water line, the easement is for the property. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
I'm over here smiling, because we have this issue at North Buncombe, and with a water line, and Lord have mercy, we spent two and a half hours this morning on that issue. So it's real important, I think, that we ask these questions and we understand where the water line is. Other questions from board members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the execution of the owner's certificate of completion and closeout documents necessary for this transfer.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Now, we, thank you, Mr. Fairley. We move on to the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from October, October, August 9, meeting, open session, the personnel report with an addendum, TC Robertson High School use of capital outlay athletic allotment, Owen Middle School use of capital outlay athletic allotment, Advisory Council members for 2018-19, Advisory Council request to remove and add members, and Advisory Council member change. Policies for second reading are also under the consent agenda, and that has to do with Policy 4316 School Dress Code, Policy 4400 attendance, Policy 5010 parent organizations, Policy 6220 Operation of Student Food Service. Uh-huh. Okay, I would entertain a motion to improve. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let you guys know that Ms. Buchanan's in the back, and she's voting, and there's a technical person back there recording her vote, so she can participate in, in this board meeting. On the information agenda, excuse me, we have the 2018, 2019 Yellow Bus List and the announcement of our future meetings. We have Teacher of the Year on September 12. NCSBA District Eight meeting is to be held at West Henderson High School on September 27. The next board meeting is October 4, right here, and the Buncombe County School District Wide Advisory Council meeting will be held October 16 at 6 o'clock at North Buncombe High School. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, a moment of privilege.
Are you going to talk ugly about North Buncombe?
No, no. I had lunch with, I had lunch with Bill Murdock last week, and he asked me to convey an invitation to all of the board members. Wednesday, the 12th of September, that's next week, at Outback Steakhouse, Evelyn has their kickoff for the Walk, Run, Roll fundraiser. And then on the 19th, which is the following Wednesday, they have their lunch again at Outback, kicking off the pumpkin sales, the pumpkin and the ghosts and all the things that they do with that, those two fundraisers. And they, he asked me to extend an invitation to all board members to both of those events, if you would like to come, starting at 11:30 both days at Outback, as a guest of Evelyn Charities.
Thank you very much. I understand Mr. Bryant and his wife have already committed to the Walk, Run, Roll.
We have been recruited by the new principal at Johnston Elementary, and we have, yes, we've committed to work to walk with that team.
Yes. So if y'all want to take pictures, you can go on over to Johnston and.
It's a fun day.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. Y'all love us so much. We want to, thank you very much. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Y'all have a good month. We'll see you next time.